Sure we got.
There we go.
Oh, Tom. Okay, I think it's too loud. Maybe we should put it farther away.
Get it turned off. Oh, is that the owl doing it?
Chair?
Let me see. I'll get my audio and video off.
You've got my audio off. I've got my audio off. So the red light is flashing. So does that mean that you should? I will for no owl.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just.
Just unplug it. We're gonna have to do.
See, but not that this is a problem. Okay, that fixes the problem.
Does that?
The problem was with the owl. We have made progress, but not enough. Owl will join the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, my. Another.
I'm glad this is.
Requesting in progress.
Okay, so they don't.
Okay.
I'm.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay, I'm confused why this audio is so messed up.
Okay.
So should we just have one person in the meeting? The rest of this back? You have a recording.
Yeah.
Would that make sense, Tom?
I'm sorry, sir.
If we all discuss that and we have more items, record the P A and we're all talking.
Okay.
Cause like this stumps off. Let me just. You've got to share.
All right, so if you go in your settings, go to your Zoom app and turn off the microphone. That's the only way. Not in the, not in the Zoom app, but in the settings. You go to Settings.
Okay.
And all the way in the apps.
Go on.
Okay. Make sure your microphone is off. I had, this comes up.
So who's gonna be able to hear us?
Well, someone's gotta have the mic. You, you should have.
Okay, okay. I'll have my mic on then.
If no one's joining the meeting, that's okay.
Yeah.
If they do, we'll know they joined. So we can get going and it is two fifteen.
Okay, Monday, April twenty, oh, no. That's the notes I've been writing about the other meeting. Okay, so it's April seventh. The meeting has started at two fifteen. Welcome to the committee and anyone who joins. We have Lynn, Lori, Tom, Guy, and Ran at the meeting. May I get approval for today's agenda? Which none of you have seen because it was to be determined. Let me describe the, um, the agenda and then you can approve it. A review of the meeting and updates to standards and ordinances commented upon. So may I get approval for the agenda?
So approved.
Okay.
I approve, approve.
Okay, thank you. The review of minutes, which was a recording, is kind of an automatic because it's a recording and it was recorded.
And I'm taking that as well.
Okay, so conflict of interest, any declarations of.
Recording in progress. No conflict.
No conflict.
So why is it doing it again? You can't get any shit going. We're in the twilight, so.
In many years.
I have sympathy for anybody who tries to listen to this recorded.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll come to the meetings now.
Yeah, okay, well, we will now, um, with no conflicts of interest declared, we may begin with the substance of the meeting. And in my understanding, what we want to do is review the meeting, what happened and, uh, kind of go through if we can, what effect the comments can have on our deliberations of what is in the middle housing part of our community plan.
Plus, we want to reference that there are, we have a letter, an email received today from Dave Bennett saying what he thinks should be in the standards, but that letter was not it shared in the meeting. We're seeing it first here today and so we should.
It wa, it was based on.
What he said.
Handouts.
But it wasn't handed out and.
Correct.
Right, so it may, so just, we just need to perhaps discuss that. Plus, the other thing we have news since the meeting is Tom's updated community plan.
Right.
Which shows, you know, what he's going, and we have sent a request to Sarah requesting additional detail on the map for the items identified in the meeting. And I copied you on that email to Sarah, so.
Okay. All right.
So if I can suggest that we might append Dave's, uh, email to our minutes.
Okay.
We'll have a reference.
Right, we will attach to the minutes, uh, Dave's questions.
Yep.
Right, and, um.
Oh, and number four, we have post-meeting, the Oceanside. I don't know if that was a press release or what that was.
That was the Oceansider from Jerry Key.
Newsletter. So we have the Oceanside newsletter too, with whatever implications, if any, from that.
Okay. So, um, and Lori had written down a number of things and we have a photo of that. And it's not, you know, have to go find the photo to look at what things that were written down. So that's.
In addition, in addition to the photo, I said that PDF had the attendance and the exact same words that are on that photo. Which.
Okay.
I, I have available here the biggest things on, the biggest, if this is a good time to share it, the things that I wrote down on that big pad in the room about what people were saying were, had to do mostly about cars and parking. And that safety was, safety and pedestrian priority were the biggest things I heard people talking about with parking. And that, um, they asked if parking could be restricted to no more than one car per residence. And that was part of trying to keep the number of cars on the street. Uh, kind of controlled to protect pedestrian and other safety, including fire safety.
So that's good. It refers directly to a, a value that we.
We also have the two dates that we're talking about, just to get those out, is that the next public meeting date on the table for discussion is April twenty first at seven P M as a Zoom meeting. Um, because, uh, Guy, the question is the date for the county that, that they have established. We think it's like the twenty ninth of April when they're gonna take this up or when we have to have our middle housing.
Stuff in.
I know the planning commission's meeting on the twenty fourth of this month. That's our first go through. Um, I think she's scheduled a couple of meetings in May. I think she's projecting June to the Board of County Commissioners.
Oh, okay. Well.
So if the planning commission is gonna review it on the twenty fourth, are they gonna review?
What the planning commission's gonna do on the twenty fourth is have a workshop. So we can't make decisions. And then we have to, it'll probably be two hearings. I think it's gonna be second week and fourth week. And may make recommendations, which means the county commissioners won't get our recommendations. And that's how I think it's unfolding. I mean, we're just starting with a workshop even, so.
But I think the thing for us to keep in mind is because we don't, the capacity to kind of, for example, to take Dave's list of, these are the things he'd like to see in it, and then take this document. Not just Tom's document, but this document. Or one of these.
One of the things I'm doing is incorporating the document, which is Taru nestling multi-family dwellings in cottage clusters. So that's being incorporated into the, into the text so that we can.
Review it.
Or review it or.
Okay.
This is the one Sarah created. So for example, with Dave's piece, if we had the capacity, you would add in, you know, okay, public meeting on April fifth, community comments were Dave Bennett X. Because at some point, what Dave's, we can't just take this and take individual comments and edit this to those comments. Cause that's not the way the public process involves. We, we need to create, this is our first draft. And then there's a second draft where we can add in anything we want to add in, but we've got to keep our, which is why this is really the county's work, do not ours. But nonetheless, we can do it. We need to keep consistent with what we're showing people. At that meeting on the twenty first, we cannot incorporate individual people's comments or changes without having a discussion of them. Or, I mean, you probably could. I just don't think it's a good idea.
Well, I can do things like, uh, put it in a box online and say, this is input from.
Perfect. That's.
I can do that.
That's what we should do is take Dave's stuff. Because like, some people stepped off the meeting before it was over. We've had a very inconsistent participation, whether the same person's coming to each meeting. So we are responsible for tracking changes. And so if we could put it in a box, that's exactly what we need.
And our idea is to come up with a graph that we think is okay, and then the community can throw rocks at it.
Yes. But do they, when do they throw rocks at it? Before it goes to the county?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, they have to. So that's the.
That's the twenty first.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know if we can get that all done in one meeting.
We can do it in May.
Start up again in May.
Well, just do it at our regular meeting and what's our, whatever that first Monday meeting is in May, we'll finalize. We'll take every, all the input and then tell people we're gonna finalize our recommendations to the county at that meeting.
So show up and.
Yeah.
Join in the discussion.
The county has responsibility before that first meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, to get it out to the community. We're dealing with a very small part of the community right now. We're dealing with random people who show up. The county has an obligation to send it to the zip code.
And they will.
When will they do that?
I.
We should be told.
We should be told. It's not gonna happen. Let's see, once they, that's the timeline, maybe there is.
That's a usual land use timeline.
Yeah, but somehow I think this measure fifty six notice doesn't have, I don't, I don't think it's the one eighty days. That's.
Cause I think there's an advantage. We have to talk to Sarah about this. To saying, given how the participation has been episodic and random, to say, Sarah, for that planning commission discussion in May, these documents need to go out. And we also would like to attach draft one of the community plan so that people can contextualize their evaluation. We've got to get people's attention back on, this is part of the plan, here's what the plan looks like right now, the plan comes later. But, but she needs to get it out now. And we need to be careful not to incorporate stuff that people will go, when did that get added? I never saw that added, blah, blah, blah. And she told me, cause I asked her, when is the county gonna take over getting this out to people? Is that?
What'd she say?
She said before that planning commission stuff in May.
Okay.
So whatever dates those are, she knows by that, that's when they send it out to the. And, and I'm just putting on the table for your consideration, sending out draft one of the community plan then too, just to be able for context and say, there's more work to be done on this. It'll happen after the middle housing piece, but we want you to know the context in which these decisions are going to be made.
Yeah, I think it ran, I mean, you probably should put a call or text in to her and say, I mean.
We need clarity on the calendar.
Well, and we need to know, when do we submit our final recommendation to her? And you know, like Lynn said, I think she's got it then, I mean, she's sending out measure fifty six notices and every community is gonna have a different draft of this. So she's got to send those out. I don't know how many day, I don't know how many days before our first hearing they have to go out. So I think that the only thing for us is we're not worried about, once the county takes over, that's their problem in terms of timeline and scheduling meetings and all that. Our big thing is, when do you need our final recommendation to the county on middle housing? What's the date? And then we can plan blind flights.
So should that be a separate document?
Oh, yeah.
Evaluation of that?
Oh, and it's separate than our community plan.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I didn't understand that.
Well, is it already in our community plan?
About half of it.
So, so there's an interesting thing that, there would be nothing wrong with that because it's electronic. It's not paper we have to worry about. There would be nothing wrong with that if we could say in some perhaps visual way, here's the whole thing, and right now we're talking about this part, all the part in yellow is the part.
Until we submit our overall plan, if there's any changes that the county makes in what we submitted, we just change it in our plan. It's no big deal. Until our plan gets submitted, we could, well, even after it's submitted, we could change things.
Yeah. So I think if you've got part of it in and we could get the rest of it in, that would be really good.
Yeah, I would just leave the middle housing thing in, but when we submit to the county, that's the piece they want that's gonna go for measure fifty six. So I think that's the only piece.
So.
This in there, is this what we put in there? Some version of this?
Lori's got some.
All right, what do you have?
I was just wondering, do we somewhere on the N C A C website have the most current draft that we have? Because one way to keep people updated is to always post our most recent draft, making, making sure it says draft and all that kind of stuff. But, and then in, in communications that the N C A has in general, put just a little sentence that says, be sure to check the latest draft of the community plan, and then people could keep themselves up to date if they want to about what our latest plan is.
I'm looking right now on the website to see if it's there.
It's, it's meant to be there. We asked for it.
Well, there's a C A C meeting.
For the Biolog Committee, then I brought a. All available, uh, if you know what the link is, we can certainly publish the link. Cause I send it to you guys all the time and that's, that resides on the N C A C website.
Okay.
Yeah, cause that would just, if anyone ever questions us about not being transparent, if we say the latest draft has, is always posted, that's about as transparent as you can get.
Who's in charge of the website for N C A C?
I think Candace.
Okay, because we, part of what's challenging about the website right now is it talks a lot about the community plan. It just doesn't have it. And then it has some random stuff.
Yeah.
Which is, we want people not to have confusion. We want them to have, say, here's, here it is. So I think we need to ask Candace to get it on.
Let me share. Um, I'll show you where it is. Um.
General meeting is, is Saturday.
Okay. I cannot, cause I'm not on Zoom. What have, what was seen? Now, where did you get that?
Um, that's, comes, that, this link here is a link to the, um, library for the, uh, community plan steering committee. And if you don't have that, you should. I assumed you did. Sorry, I will send it all to you.
But, but I'm, to, to me, I think we need to make this as simple as it can, can be, which is to just put the current draft on the website. Candace.
That was meant to be done.
Yeah.
But just to show you that we have.
Yeah.
All of the stuff that I've touched and have had access to has been stored.
We would be lost without you, seriously. Can you, who's Candace? Can someone talk to her and tell her to get it on the website?
Well, I can, yeah, I can approach her and say, well, Tom and I have to do it together, cause, well, if I have the link, I can just, we can just send her the link and say, we need this posted so people can access this easily. But where it should be is.
Nancy knows where the one, the, there's a folder and we're meant to dump into that folder.
Uh huh.
The most current version. That way the website doesn't have to change every time we change.
I see.
So the idea is I need to know where that folder is. I don't.
But, but also, we want the people across the street to be able to go on with the season.
They should be able to see it on the website.
Yeah.
Uh, I would steadfastly avoid you any knowledge of how that website works.
Good. To save your time and effort.
Creative difference.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it seems, if you don't mind, that if you could work with Candace to get that into that folder and that folder is.
It's meant to be on, on, on the website.
It's not, and, and.
Easy to find.
Folder. It's, they have a heading here, new community plan. That's where it should be. If I'm a citizen.
Right, that's where I'm gonna go to find it.
I don't want to hear about the archive, the folders or anything else. This is why websites, they've got it designed for us to just load it there.
We don't have big professional.
I, I understand, but they've got a lot of other stuff on here they can take off and just put the plan up there.
Remained ignorant on how to do that.
Okay, I will, I will talk to Candace and ask if we can just get that in the community plan thing. So when you click community plan, there is a place to say, current draft, community plan. Punch the button.
Boom.
Yeah.
We want a boom, not a folder archive or not other nonsense.
I don't think you can do the folder without the folder, but the folder is gonna be like what I showed you.
Yeah.
This. And it won't have all these things. We just, that's the plan.
But, but look at this.
Not what.
Look at this, new community plan.
I understand that doesn't work.
But, well, no, but it, it does work. What I'm saying is they've already loaded on like goal one and two. So someone knows how to.
It's probably Jeff.
It was probably me that.
Okay, well, let's just, let's ask and just, I don't know if it helps to remind them that they're a creature of this process. Right, this is a state designated thing.
Project.
Yeah, so I think, um.
Here's the current plan here. Click on that and uh, that's the old one.
Yep. They got the old one on there. If they can get the new. Yeah, okay, so good. I made a note of that. We're gonna try and get someone who can do that. And then we're gonna find out from Sarah and then we agreed on that twenty first time that we've discussed it, but have we agreed that the twenty first at seven P M is the throw rocks meeting?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that will be the next iteration where people can look at it and go, wait a second. Or, yeah, we love that.
And should we inform them at that time that this will be their first bite of the apple or their second bite or their momos?
Last bite.
Last bite? On middle housing?
And it's gonna have.
More time.
No, I think it's gonna get submitted and then we'll prob, it'll probably get kicked back or something. I don't, or maybe Sarah will just take out anything that is illegal or.
So what, so what's, tell me what the, just because it informs our practice with what we're trying to do and whether we, how much additional standards we think we can add to the strap we've got. Guy, what's the deal with Oceanside? And the fact that.
Did you read that today?
So what's happening there and what do we need from that process to?
I was surprised about, um, the county council's recommendation or this, not even, I don't know if it was a decision, but at least their, an opinion, I guess. That even when you make changes and like building heights, that's a big issue in Oceanside is building heights. And, um, lot coverage and other kinds of things that are big issues there. But that's a taking. I was like.
Really?
Really? I mean, I, I get the land use, I mean, how we use your property is one thing. But in terms of how you put restrictions on building, and then the follow-up that Jerry wrote in that email was, well, we can still talk about, you know, we don't want boxes for houses and, you know, that kind of stuff. Well, wait a minute. I mean, if you can't tell somebody you can't build above thirty feet. You're gonna tell them, I can't build a box? I mean, so I don't know where they're going with that, but anyways, all to say was big surprise to me. We have talked about, uh, in the past on our committee even, an, an idea that when, uh, building, you know, given the impact of climate change and the increased number of storms we're having, that should we take a look at building standards, remember in, in building codes uh, as to how people remodel or build their homes here on the coast? And Sarah came back and told us that, know the state deals with building codes and even though Toma County may have some, and we do in the hazard. Coastal hazard, we have building codes that are different. But she said, we can't touch that. So we're not, we're not bothering with any of that. We're not changing anything in terms of how you build your house, but we do have a height restriction, but the difference is, we already had that in place. That was part of our plan that came in the twenty, uh, two thousand rather. And so a measure fifty six notice already went out about that twenty years, twenty five years ago. Oceanside's trying to do it now. And I think what Sarah is saying, we have to go out with a measure fifty six notice if you want to change to something like building heights. So.
So the question maybe for us, for example, is would Sarah say that the, you know, this idea of one car per unit?
I think we're, how they're justifying all these changes is that they relate to middle housing and everything under middle housing is covered under the, because the legislature passed this.
Right.
And we can get it through because you can't, you don't have to do a measure fifty six notice on any list of actions. And that's, to me, the one big confusing thing of them, when we asked about, can we restrict middle housing to housing? That was, because that would be a take, otherwise it'd be a taking.
Right.
So she was gonna check that out, which is something I think we need to clarify with her. Can we restrict middle housing to housing?
I think we should have it as a recommendation.
Well.
Whether or not that they've said yes or no.
Yeah.
Still be on drugs, I'm saying that's what we want.
Yeah, they could always.
Right.
County can always take it out.
Yeah, and that's a good reminder, Guy, because we don't have to, nor should we assume that we finalized it on the twenty first. And then the county just says, brilliant. We embrace all of it. I don't think they will. I think they'll say.
I'll know a lot more after the twenty fourth.
After the work session. After the work session.
After our work session.
I do think that the interesting part of these remains to me is. If any affordable housing is ever achieved, because I think the ability to take a lot in the village. And put four houses on it. With nine hundred square feet and that you have a created, you have created affordable housing in the sense that the price of one of those. Is not gonna be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's gonna be. Three hundred thousand dollars, because they're gonna have four on a lot and that's gonna give the developer a million too. But. Whether it's people for work, whether you can turn that into people for working people. At three hundred and twenty thousand, it does not pencil, so rentals even in Nescolin today. If you have a mortgage of three hundred and twenty thousand, regardless of what the mortgage rate is at this very moment in our lives. It's not gonna pencil for rental, it's for working people, right, I mean, you might be able to charge five hundred dollars a night on the weekend or. But for working people, you still may not have anything.
I'm, I I hope you're right.
I hope I'm wrong, I mean.
No, I hope you're right, that it's, that a quadplex or a triplex is only gonna go for three hundred a piece. I think they're gonna say, if a nine hundred square foot cottage. Forty fifty years old goes for over eight hundred thousand, and I'm building you a new, new place that's nine hundred square feet.
So it's worse.
I think it's worth. I really, if I'm a developer, I'm taking a look and say, what is nine hundred feet steps? You know, and I've got a brand new nine hundred square feet now. Just nothing, everything modern, won't have to be, you know, remodel anything or fix anything. I think it's gonna go for eight, nine hundred thousand each, I'm gonna make two point seven million.
This is like putting uh middle housing just off Vista. In Portland or something, it's like, how realistic is this, you know? And I guess you have to throw it out to the whole state, we gotta do it everywhere to see where. It sticks on the wall and where it's affordable.
The reason I ask is because. You know, be because of that Atlantic article. And because I do think working people need to have access to housing, I really, really do. To me, it's like, well, wait a second, what if we do none of this and the community does and. The community does what it did with the golf course. Well, we'll just buy it ourselves. And so Neskoin's supposed to have forty residences, the community comes together and finds a place. To build ten things and does it with, you know. Affordable housing bonding, F, what's it called, F, F H A. Subsidy funding. And there it is, and we solved the problem as opposed to all of this which goes on for years and may produce absolutely nothing. I mean, if we really cared about affordable housing for working people. We'd find a piece of land, we'd see if we could get someone to donate it, and then we'd build twenty units and see if they ever filled up, maybe we build ten, if you're doing forty. Let's just do ten, see if that it works, if not, it can turn into a rental for, with the, to me, it's like, we're doing all of this. We're gonna put boxes next to people's cabins and they're gonna. That's the part that gets to me.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea, I mean, in terms of we really do want, it's the only way we're gonna. But no, I think that's.
I mean, I just think it's not, if you have ten units and each one was nine hundred square feet. And costs of construction right now are. I do the math in my head, but I can't, I have to look at the cost of construction.
In the meantime, I'm gonna send you all. Library so that you can look at all of the previous versions and all the stuff that's.
I think it depends on office.
Okay, and and it's, is it? Version nine now?
Version nine is out there, um, right in front of me is gonna be version ten.
Okay. And is that something that then if I talk to Candace?
You can tell her that's where this resides.
Okay, we'll have the link, okay, yes, thank you.
So nine hundred square, how, you don't do nine hundred times two fifty, do you?
Well, if you had a triplex or something, no, wouldn't it, because you got shared walls and stuff like that, so it'd be less, probably about more like two hundred square, two hundred square foot. I know when our, well, God knows. A thick dome. He just has a has a valuator of that.
So what if that's?
Fifty four hundred square foot, something like that, not a repla- a replacement value.
So, here's the other thing, you could get really clever with this. Here's the other thing, is what if the, what if the community said, we're gonna. Buy this piece of land. And for the first five years, because we want worker housing. We're gonna put ten. Mobile homes, much like where the fire was, right, they're manufactured housing. And we're gonna see what the volume is and what the. Usages and how many employees we have to work, but ten families can move in there. With manufactured housing and and in fact, our model may include that the people. I don't know how, that's down the road, and there it is. And then we say to the county at the end of the five year test period, hey, look. It worked and we got it built ahead of everyone else who's doing all this nonsense. And we got working people in housing that they can afford to buy. And they could buy it back, I mean, that's the habitat for humanity, Mark. If we just, if we just, to me, it just would be so much simpler.
I kinda think that there's some. Model out there that cities have used forming as housing corporation, and there's a, there's a semi, a semi. But I think Tom is is, you could. Know in our list of things that we would like to do, like moving. The fire station and having a pathway to South Beach.
Aspirations.
I think one of the things, I think Lynn's idea of, that that the community invests. In affordable, that the community itself invests in affordable housing. And we we can do such as, but we don't have to dictate, you know, we don't have to say we should buy the lots and build the homes. But that we should. We, our recommendation is that a group should be formed to explore ways in which we could, the community itself could provide. I would say affordable, I mean workforce, yeah, actually, I would say workforce, you're right. Rather than say affordable because affordable is a relative term, you know.
I think workforce housing is exactly right. We're not doing subsidized housing, we're doing workforce housing. But here's the thing, so this Portland, you know, big city. That their housing authority administers four hundred public housing units, if Neskoin did ten, ten. We're, we're lighting the world on fire, we're like the, who the A plus student in the class.
No, I like it. I think we ought to have it in our list of things that.
Donate the land, take a tax deduction on the donation of the land, because it's a public entity, right, it's not gonna be. It's not gonna be privately owned, I mean, that's another alternative, we can make it privately owned, the community owns it. But to me, the thing is, is that the county's doing all this stuff. With all due respect. On one hand, but there's no help with any of it on the operational side. It's like the roads and everything else, safety roads, et cetera, they don't do any of those things anymore, so to me. I I just think we should ask her, because I just think there might be a shorter, cheaper way, and it was said to the whole community, we're doing this. Because it's the right thing to do. We're looking for a donor for the land, um and don't forget, we're gonna set this up as a something so that you can donate it, it has. And have it be tax deductible, it's a nonprofit at a minimum. And. We're gonna just get it done, and maybe we start with five minutes, or maybe even, I mean. Start small, see if it works, but is it expandable, sure, but then, and we tell everyone who owns property here, guess what? We're done. All in, and people would go, wait a minute, I don't have to worry about. I mean, the stuff that someone building a four. My worst nightmare is we turn it into Carmel, California, and they build four million dollar nine hundred square foot, each one's a million bucks. Someone makes three million dollars. No affordable ha- or workforce housing's available, someone's gotten rich and the neighbor next door has four units. Of eight cars and how many kids and how much noise.
Tom.
So, we don't have any choice about four or six, it's gotta be here, but I do have. You down, and should I put you as well in terms of, as a, as a, should form a group to create workforce housing? I'd like some text.
We have to put our names down, but yeah, I think we. Is Lori on board with, is that one of our recommendations?
Yeah, let's ask the realtor. Ex-real.
I I think Lynn's idea is awesome, I don't see how it can. Shield us from the other effects, because it, what Tom said, it's a state law. But it could, it could, it could encourage. Us to make the requirements to qualify for each of the categories as strict as possible. With the concept that. We are gonna provide the housing in a different way that makes sense for our community. And we're not being elitist by requiring all these other things.
It doesn't have, one doesn't have to be tied to the other either, Lori, we could. In my brain, we gotta do middle housing, we gotta do Senate four oh six, we're gonna get that done, period. And they have a goal for that, which we all know is kind of unrealistic in a coastal touristy town. So we'll just put that aside. Separate from that. We think about some kind of housing authority, the Neskoin Housing Authority, we get investors, we build, they can, you know, we. Get people who get their money back, my, actually, my father-in-law did this. When he was alive, they bought property at Moses Lake Airport, all around the airport and built housing. Workforce housing. It would be a separate than four oh six.
So here's the thing, I don't think there's anything in four oh six, I can go back and look, but I. Probably wanna see what other organizations said about four oh six. Four oh six. Part of the way you would get people to invest in that is say. And we, it's not that we don't have to do four oh six, but we're not spending any time on it. And we're not telling anyone that the lot next to them has to be open, because what the law says is you have to make it available. You can't build a barrier to it. And so to me is, they're, it would be an interesting discussion to have with probably with the Attorney General's Office, but to say, look. You're building a model here, which is gonna turn into Carmel, California. You've got four, people who could never afford a beach house can now afford a three year price, four fifty thousand. On this, but it wreaks havoc with everyone else. And so, you want. Housing, we want, because I don't think people will invest if they think they're gonna get both. They'll say, wait a second, I'm already gonna get this thing next door, you haven't done anything to solve my problem, my problem is I don't want this thing next door. And. I wanna meet the obligation, and the governor knows, she's two years into this, she knows, she, they're not meeting their goals at all. Because, and that was before the stock market tanked. So it would be at least worth having the conversation, and Sarah can find the person higher than Sarah, it's not a county question, it's a state question. But I, it's a worthwhile question, because what makes investors willing to invest is we've cut out all this nonsense. We've gotten the job done and fast. And we've kept the values that the community most cares about. Cause I don't think, I'm not real excited about taking that corner over there, which can't be done, because there's C C R's that prevent it here, but down the road. I just am not excited with the density that will come. With very luxurious fancy, you know, one car. Four on a lot, nine hundred square foot houses. If you think it's four fifty, that just, now I'm really scared, because that's a whole thing going on. And that could change the whole profile of this community, this has always been a community. For my entire lifetime, that is very open to middle-class participants. And we're not gonna get those people, middle-class people aren't buying four hundred and fifty thousand beach houses these days. And there won't be. So to me, we get all high-end, we get a lot of expensive, and I'm, I'm nothing against people who've. With, well, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying. Is, is there maybe an easier way that would meet the criteria?
So that's an aspiration, and it's, and it belongs in here. And uh, Tom can put whatever he can figure out, and then we'll fill in the blanks, I guess.
I got some flavor that I bet. A group to create a workforce housing project. Uh Neskoin Housing Authority, that's all I got.
Okay, well, I think that's, it's, that's a placeholder, that's the one.
Or here's, here's the other thing, I'm just going on and on with mine, and those people get first right of refusal on any cottage clusters. Right, so. Which I guess would be a taking, right? I just think there's an avenue here, we, we don't wanna ignore and. Given that the county's not building any of this housing and.
I won't mention it on Saturday, though.
Thank you, no.
In my report, but I do.
But one thing you should mention on Saturday is part of it. You know, in terms of input, we haven't had an open meeting to talk about. What people would like to see over the next twenty years in Neskoin. We've heard pe- bits and pieces like the pathway to South Beach, you know, a safe pathway, a safe pathway across one on one. You know, we've talked about the fire hall, some people have, uh moving the fire hall. Uh, community center. Uh, other than the golf course clubhouse. So, I mean, we, we can say, you know, there are many things we would like your input on. But that, that's one, and people, some really good ideas have come up, so, and this is another one. That you can mention, and you you can even mention on Saturday, and there's some people who've talked about that the community itself should come together. Provide. Workforce, invest in workforce housing, as we, for instance, invested in the golf course or whatever. So. Yeah, I. I mean, actually, me is a big part of what the community can add to us, I mean, we're kind of going through. All the basic stuff, I mean, plus. As we remind ourselves, we are updating and revising the old plan, not rewriting a new plan. So we're using the old plan, you know, to bring everything up to date.
So that's something. Guy, that's something, it's an important point for us to talk about once we lean on this part of the process, because. Do need to, you said you think the county will take up the plans in June, July?
May, I'm gonna guess, oh, oh.
Middle housing, we're saying it's done in May, September?
This middle housing thing's gonna take through June. July and August is hard, you know, the, the development, community development is really busy with a lot of permitting. She's not gonna push it. Uh, I see. Nah, maybe totally wrong, but I see September-ish us coming forward. And if we, if we think about it, we have Memorial Day meeting. Which I think we ought to take advantage of getting feedback on the plan. But we're gonna ask people to take a look at it, show them the sections, have some thoughts. And maybe have some kind of.
We're gonna need a questionnaire or something where we can collect, they did about thirty percent turned in their questionnaires last term. Well, it's just a problem, it's a different organization's meeting, you know, you can't take two hours.
We've done, what we did with the coastal hazards overlay thing, we took the half hour before. We said, or the half hour after, I can't remember which one, and we did. But we, we piggybacked on the fact that people were gonna show up there, I think we did it before.
So here's the thing, though, that would be really, given that the community plant, the community meeting and. Memorial Day is the largest attended event. I think as a regular basis, plus the Labor Day meeting in the community of all meetings. So it's possible if on the twenty sixth, which Memorial Day is on a weird day this year.
On Wednesday or something.
Well, it's on the twenty sixth, it's not on the thirty first. So the question would be. On the twenty sixth, could we, if the plan had been up on the website for people to use. Plus, we showed up with hard copies of it, plus the housing stuff in some draft form is there. That would be a great time to say. We're gonna get done with this in September, we're giving you this copy now, we, we're gonna, you have.
Mark it up.
Mark it up, get it back to us, and the next time you'll see us is at the Labor Day meeting. And that's our drop dead date, you gotta have whatever you're giving us by the Labor Day meeting, because we're gonna be done before Christmas.
We could even submit it to the county. Right, like in August or Jan- July or August, they would have a hearing. They would notify people, they're hearing, and here's the plan, so people could come to the hearing itself.
A squawk.
They had problems, yeah. I mean, that's the way, that's how the.
Normally, how it works, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Do we wanna talk about the substantive suggestions
Dave made?
Dave made in the context of this?
Yeah, but, yeah, some of them.
Is it easier for you, Tom, in your putting this into the plan, to just put Dave boxes down the side?
I could do, that's, that's gonna be easier to do, but we haven't any decisions to make on that, we maybe need to adopt enough that, so.
So it's worth looking at them, I think, uh, like taking our time now to do that, and then seeing this, what's substantive and what is not in there, uh, to, to determine if it's worth, if it makes it into the draft.
So I, so I have it in front of me, I don't know if you all have it in front of you.
I, I don't, but.
Okay, I can put it on.
You can put on the screen, thank you. That's gonna be the next thing.
I have a question while it's happening. Um, is it possible for us to require two off-street, off-street parking places per unit, or did Sarah say we were limited to one?
Says a minimum of one.
Because it seemed like, seemed like parking was the biggest concern of people. And if in fact, we don't think these units are actually gonna be workforce housing anyway, being more restrictive on the parking would protect the community, that might decrease the number of houses that could be built in the cottage cluster, for instance. But if we think those aren't gonna be workforce housing anyway, um, the two-car per unit might protect the neighborhood from density that's not getting us our goal.
So, so Lori, I think that's a great question, particularly in light of Dave Bennett's recommendation for three, not four units. Part of what I can imagine is that um, you get enough land left to make money if you have two off-street parking, because, and, and.
For each unit.
For each unit, and you may have to make it a two-story building and to do that, so that they're driving under the building as a carport or something. Um, but that's the part that's so desperately missing from this process is some form of economic reality. Because two off-street parking places, that's eight for four, and that's sixteen for eight units. And I just can't, I'm trying to think of how you get that much stuff.
In our small lots.
I mean, if it were workforce housing, and it was built as a kind of habitat for humanity model, you know, that's where we talked Saturday about saying part of the deal with these tiny houses is that you get only one, you have to have one car.
Mm-hmm.
The Portland approach, we're just gonna ram it down your throat and make you live with it. Um, I'm not suggesting we do that, nor do I think that's good policymaking, but I'm just saying, it, it, it's a good question. We need to ask Sarah, that's on the list. What, the, the whole parking thing, limited to one, or force them to have two, or, or, uh, if each of those four had two cars, and four more cars are parked on, let's say, the lot across the street, the neighbors are not gonna be happy.
No.
We don't, when this car, when this house across the street has four cars, which they do a lot, not because they have lots of kids, but they have that whole big long driveway. These, and, and that's great, because they all go off the street.
Right.
And it's, but it's, we, Sarah, to help us on that, because I don't know where the line is between the taking and between a, you can't force people to only have one car.
But what you can't, you know, Lori, what did you think of the idea? I think I raised it Saturday that our recommendation is we, and we can pick the streets that there's, you can only have parking on one side of the street.
Or that, actually, I was just beginning to give an example. So on the street where I live.
And where? Nesquen?
Um, in, in Nesquen, street that I live in Nesquen. Um, if you park in front of my house and the neighbor across the street parks in front of their house, the fire truck cannot safely go down the street. This is Sheridan Avenue, Nesquen. Um, and the, the fire, at, not the current fire chief, but a previous fire chief has actually knocked on our doors and said, you as neighbors need to either park on one side of the street or the other, especially on a holiday weekend, when there's extra cars here, because we can't get our fire trucks down the street. And because we know the people across the street, and they are cooperative neighbors, and we all wanna be safe, we actually do that. But that's because we've all owned our houses since the eighties, and we all talk to each other. Um, on that very same street, we have three vacant lots, which could each take one of these new housing units. For instance, they could each take a quadruplex. I don't know if they are big enough for cottage clusters, but they could each have a quad. So that, in my mind, is four to eight new cars on each of those lots. So if it's eight cars, that's twenty-four new cars on the streets, some of which would have on-street parking. But even if there was four each, that's twelve new cars, they don't, literally do not fit on one side of the street. And so the car issue is truly both a safety and a quality of life thing. Um, and, and the state law does not reflect the actual built infrastructure in some of the places this law will be requiring density. So I, I think we really need to bring that up to Sarah and the, um, county commissioners to to honestly be realistic about where these, about, about, about cars.
Julie, I have that in the minutes, that we need to get some more clarity on that, and also the taking thing, that's, I don't know what four oh six does for, I mean, I don't, I have to say that having worked with, um, you know, workforce people for thirteen years at the, you know, people just at the bottom of the workforce, um, in working with psychiatric children, indigent psychiatric children, none of them had two cars, because they couldn't afford to operate two cars. And I mean, a car is a big expense and about to become a huge expense. If, I don't know what happened. But, but to me, the no, the notion in Nesquen that you would have a house, Lori, like yours, and suddenly there would be twenty-four more cars on the street, I don't think that's pedestrian-friendly, I don't think that's kid-friendly. Just the traffic volume is appalling. His safety just scares the daylights out of me.
So, do we, I guess the question, do we see parking as, uh, in the, in your uh, watershed council terms as a limiting factor in what is possible?
Yeah.
And that, that has to be approached realistically, that the, that the limiting factor is gonna, for a lot of this stuff, is the vehicles.
And that's true east of the highway as well. Right? Some of those sloped areas, you're not gonna be able to get
Multiple.
Eight, twenty-four cars.
Go up on Sunbow and go off on one of those little side roads, there's not a lot of.
And you had a lot of shoulder.
Not a lot of shoulder.
Okay, so I noted that stuff. Do we wanna go through Dave's list?
Let's go, it's up, it's up on the screen, let's go through and see if it all.
Minimum. I thought we had to have four.
It's three or four, the way the language Sarah had in there, for us, three or four.
Well, then maybe we, so that would open up more, so I don't know how I missed that, maybe we should just say three.
Yeah, that's a minimum, sure. Yeah, three unit minimum. Oh, minimum. Wouldn't it be maximum?
Yeah.
No, minimum.
Well, then, we haven't changed.
Maximum sixteen. But we set it at eight for Nesquen.
Well, no, so that's reversible. If it's a three-unit minimum.
A minimum.
Three units.
It'll let.
Still have four years. We still have four, you'd have up to eight.
So I think we do want.
Cause our maximum is eight, right, that we put in our rules.
Okay, so we agreed with Dave that we wanna, we do, but we don't know what everyone else thinks, but
Right, right.
three-unit minimum.
Right.
And we had.
That's a good catch on his part, we hadn't focused on that before.
Well, I think the language in ours was three or four, if I remember, and, uh,
Yeah.
And so that's what he just said, three. I think the model code not as their forty-sixteen, but anyway, which, which, we can't leave it from the model code, we can have the justification for it, and I think we do it.
Okay, so we got that. Nine hundred square foot unit seems reasonable.
That's a max. We don't have a minimum.
Nine hundred square foot.
There's a practical minimum based on.
Limit.
Well, that's what Sarah said. But, yeah, a bathroom has to be able to stand in.
So this, Thomas, did you meet Ron on Saturday?
No.
Guy, this is Ron. Ron, this is Guy.
Guy.
And that Ryan.
Oh, yeah, it's a joy, a joy to behold.
We can help out if you have time, no.
Okay, so nine hundred square feet, we got that.
And that's a max.
That's a max.
Right.
I mean, he's just really going, he's just using that slide, is, he's just saying that he thinks that's reasonable, or.
Yes, we've already got that.
We already got them.
And then clear standards, you got, um, and I agree, I think we'd always said no community buildings.
Well, you two certainly did.
We did in our meeting, he, I think he's just saying he doesn't have a strong opinion about that.
Right.
He did, he didn't hear the discussion that we had about why we didn't.
Insanity that could ensue. Okay.
Yeah.
Or at least for clear and objective design standards, if, if you knew, if we knew what they actually could be.
Yeah, we know they're not Oceanside, so we just. Okay.
So, so far, we don't have nothing in.
Well, we've already said.
Except for the three-minute, yeah, so that's.
Okay, so lot coverage. Maintaining the seventy-foot seems reasonable to him. And he supports the addition of reasonable, fair FAR standards.
Which we haven't really discussed.
Floor area.
We haven't discussed. She did give us a really good picture of it.
Yeah.
Couple, I think.
Yeah. And I think that's gonna go past a lot of people, they're not gonna be able to.
Compute that, as to what that really means.
But, okay. Um, the high-density major of somewhere our neighborhood's support approach three, which would limit a building footprint to thirty-seven hundred and fifty square feet regardless of the number of stories.
I don't remember what approach three was.
I don't, oh, here it is. It's this one. In the handout. Um, so this is three, seven, five, oh, on ones, boy, it really takes up the whole.
You charging with that little USB?
Yeah.
Well, we got one right there, that's active.
Do you need more? Horse car?
I can move over there.
Well, how do we, yeah, how, maybe I can give you power from mine.
Ooh.
Yeah. Plug that in, and, and I'll plug this in, and you, you can steal my power. Not that I have much. That do it?
We wouldn't steal your power there.
Right, cause you don't want it. You don't want it.
I support approach three, which would limit a building footprint regardless of the number of stories, but this says one story for that big a, a building. And this is an approach three for what?
Nope. Didn't give it power?
No. It's gone out.
Do you wanna plug in my, I have my, um.
I, I, I personally, I, I haven't really looked at this FARs in depth before, but I would have a problem allowing middle housing to plop a seven thousand three hundred and fifty-foot two-story building next to me that was middle housing.
Yep. That's an approach two B, though. I don't think, approach two B allows seven thousand three hundred and fifty square feet for two stories. Approach three does not allow that.
Okay.
We have a point five FAR as opposed to, I don't, shouldn't say what the other one.
I don't see that in my packets that we handed out at the meeting. I don't see approach three.
So in, it's in my, in my one that I got at the meeting, it's in the one that's horizontal and says Nesquen CAC Land Use and Plan Review Committee updates.
Okay.
And the first picture it has is the little middle housing code options, which are called what? What's that called when the circles intersect?
Venn diagram.
It's a Venn diagram, thank you, Tom.
We, approach three, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah, it's in there, Lori.
Oh, I see, I do, I found it, yeah, I found it, okay. Yeah, two D was unacceptable, as far as I'm concerned.
Yes. Dave spent time looking at this more than I have, but I, I definitely would favor three over two B.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not excited about two B.
Or not to be.
Or not to be, and it was there a two.
Those are all live here. Yeah.
And these are for townhouses.
Do we have to allow this? Because even the one-story, three thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot, if you put that next to one of the small little cottages in Nesquen, it would be really dwarfing it.
It would be, and particularly because it, I'm trying to think about thirty-seven hundred square feet on the hillside, too, without, like.
And also with just a five, a five-foot setback, you know.
Construction-wise, thirty-seven, that's expensive. That's like way bigger than this house.
Yeah.
Yeah, our house is thirty-two fifty.
It's twenty-five hundred.
I mean, once again, if you're thinking back to the concept that this is supposed to be workforce housing, and that things in Nesquen sell, sell for a hundred dollars a square foot, that's a three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar property.
You gotta get your license back, Lori.
I think we have to have a discussion with Sarah on square footage and FAR standards and what we're talking about. I mean, I just.
Oh, there's a tutorial on the part of it.
She just put all this together, which is great, but I think we need to have a more we need, did we go through this? Did she go through this with her?
With us? No, I, I think that Oceanside's been talking about this. I listened to one of their meetings, um, and she might have known that this was coming, and just included it in the packet.
Yeah.
But it's not the package she used in her presentation to us?
I don't remember talking about FAR standards, I mean, in terms of, of, of building design.
Oh, here, the comments here are, does not focus on lot coverage or how much lot is covered with the structures, instead applies to a maximum floor area that must be achieved regardless of the number of dwelling units or height of a building may result in tower-like structures. Well, that's not something that.
Well, we got a building height requirement in Nesquen, so we're, everything stays the same in terms of building heights. And we said cottages can't be higher than seventeen feet, right, I mean, at least.
Right.
And they gotta be single-floor, uh, single-story, so beyond that, I don't think we can say it has to be a wood structure, it has to have metal roof, and, you know, I don't think we can get into that. I mean, the whole. I mean, the whole purpose of the middle housing thing is you can't be, keep adding restrictions. To what you're gonna put out there.
But do we, I think we've done a really good job. We've really focused on cottage clusters in all of our discussions. We have not spent as much time talking about townhouses. And so I don't know if Dave talks about townhouses.
No, we didn't.
Let's see, parking.
He's just all.
Park, he's talking, well, parking requirements, we'll touch up, well, we'll touch on that.
Yes. But I think the townhouse question in Nescuin is one we probably need to spend a little time on, and she's given us the stuff here. To do that. We should finish Dave's memo first, but I'm a little concerned, because I'm trying to think where we're gonna put townhouses.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
Given the high-density support approach, I'm concerned about approach three, so at least in the minutes I wrote, question mark. Um, parking permits, only one onsite parking space for multifamily could leave the average two-car household relying on on-street parking. Yep.
Yeah, it's a safety issue.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we've got to really raise that with Sarah at the next time. What are our options, including. Having fire department mandate single, uh, one-side parking and then enforcement, I mean. Lori, your husband on Saturday said that he and I should go into a towing business if we add this.
I, I heard that.
We could do pretty well.
Department has to weigh in on these plans.
Oh, yeah.
And they weigh in on the permit level, but shouldn't we ask the fire department to weigh in before we set all these standards?
I think.
Yeah.
They should, and that'll, it should be something that comes up, and it's mainly to do with access and parking. When they look at these cottage clusters, I mean, they gotta say, yeah, we can access them. Uh, but I think the parking issue is gonna be something that the fire, it's fire is gonna be interested in, and that's, and that's going. When we got these skinny streets, so. We'll have to think about solutions. I mean, one-side parking, one side of the street parking's one, but there might be others. Um, have to think about that.
I, but I mentioned, I mentioned I went to the Oceanside, or I didn't go to it, but I listened to the Oceanside. One of the Oceanside meetings. Um, and the fire, uh, uh, I think it was the fire chief, but anyway, someone from the fire department did attend that meeting. And they were asking about just the consequences as far as that person saw these changes and. He was actually concerned about the capacity of the fire department to actually put out a fire. In one of the quadruplexes or a dense cottage cluster because of. The proximity of the units and how the fire department. I mean, just having the capacity to keep the fire from spreading between the units. Um, and so it would be interesting to see if he was willing to come and talk to us or give a written opinion. Or something, because there, he definitely expressed. Concerns, but also acknowledged that it was a state law and there was nothing that Oceanside could do about parts of it. Um. And I'm sure, I'm sure, sure Sarah's heard the concerns, so she might be able to share them with us also.
I think where the fire department comes in really handy, so that's really helpful, Lori, because I think. They probably weighed in at the bill on the, in the legislature, they are a lobbying entity. So, to me, it's like, okay, we got these two innate challenges. On the east side of the road and on the west side of the road, whi- which are. Safety issues, which are parking and fire access. And the question for us is, how do we use those barriers? And not use them as barriers to prevent middle housing, that's not our goal. But how do we have, have we done everything we can do to write our design standards to reflect that goal? So the three, you know, maximum. A minimum, three minimum thing is one, the. The. The, um, fire department may say that the other one is that they have to. Not take, I don't know how the FAR relates to the FIRE standard, but I know in California and Los Angeles, the proxim- the five-foot. Gap between houses in the LA FIRE was a liability, right? Um, well, it's ten feet, five feet on each side, but it was a real problem, um. So we need to think about that, but I also think we've got to look at these standards for townhouses she's talking about. And see if we think we're covering there.
We're looking for ways to accommodate. I mean, I think that could be a. Term. You know, we don't disagree with middle housing. We're trying to accommodate middle housing within the Nescuin community. With its own particular challenge, like skinny streets. So, I look at it as. The parking issue is a way we have to figure, get to figure out to accommodate high density. I think it's, well, especially in the village, well, even in South Beach. It's a challenge, not in the lower end, you know, along the creek, but. To Hallie, of course, they got the CC lines, it's not good, they're not, they got two, um, HOAs. They don't have to worry about this. Nescuin Ridge.
And there's a lot of real estate available up there.
So here's where you could put. Yeah, if you were doing townhomes and you wanted extra, those look like double-sized, long, narrow lots. Where you could do a plan, I don't know about up in here. There's only like two in the.
Well, this area here, a, a lot of the zone are. They're big, but they're like this, this side on the north end.
Right.
And then this is down on the flat, this is actually the flood zone, what we tried to fill in, that's everybody.
So, maybe what we should, given the, I think Lori's point is really well-taken, that's it.
Well, we got some questions for Sarah.
We got some questions for Sarah.
The most, the biggest thing from Sarah, we gotta get to deadline.
We gotta get a deadline, and we've set our next meeting, right? The twenty-first is the next community meeting. What about our next meeting?
The fourteenth.
Okay, so we're gonna keep that meeting. So I think we have to pick it up there. It's gonna be good if Sarah can come on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got, we need her, her back.
And particularly after this Oceanside experience, it should be really helpful to at least hear what she says. So we're gonna have a meeting on the fourteenth. Um. I'm pleased to hear that we've kind of got the middle housing stuff started into the content. I'll get minutes out probably tomorrow, so we can follow up on our to-do lists. And we can go from there. Rand has to hit the road and get to Portland. I have to be on a four o'clock call, but.
I can leave the, the computer and meeting going if you wanna go.
No, we're gonna.
No, I think we should, I think we've gotten a lot done today.
Can't be leaderless.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do. And I think Dave's list is mostly consistent with what we've said with a few noteworthy things we're gonna pursue.
If there's something different than what we already have, and then I'll make that note. That's how good we extract what's different than what we already.
Perfect. Perfect.
Um, the fourteenth is.
Next week.
I gotta go swimming in the morning then.
I got it, already set up at.
Two?
At two o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever.
Yep.
It's not, that's not changing. I've got all, I got them.
It wa- it. Yeah.
Well, okay.
Randy gonna be gone for a while, or?
I'll be back tomorrow.
Wednesday night, we, we got that.
Do you want some oranges to take with you in the car? They're really good.
Sure, thank you.
Some, it's a long drive.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I think we're in good shape. And we're gonna get them to put the plan up on, it would really help to get the plan up on the website. Cause then we can just tell people, you, I, you know, I can send out a broadcast email to forty people. Saying, here's the community plan, it's a draft, get going, start reading it, we're going, get going, and then to people in the. Probably another twenty people in the village. And just say.
So when, when they change that on the website, right now it's a, has a place to click through to what they call the current plan. So maybe we should have them call that the current nineteen ninety-nine plan, and then the new draft. Uh, update, or something like that, so that they get it, that the quote current plan is from nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, that's pretty important clarification.
How much do it is to read and follow from nineteen ninety-nine?
It's actually approved in two thousand and one, so yeah, it is the two thousand and one.
Okay.
Okay, so I either have to stop the recording or leave this.
Nope, we're there, we stopped the minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. Good job, thanks for being here, okay.
Good work, guys.